Commissioners Court, Brazos County, we begin regular session on May the 28th, 10:00 AM, Commissioners Court Room 200 South Texas Avenue. First item on the agenda is in case pled of allegiance of U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Conley will leave us.
God, thank you for all those brave men and women who stand in the breach to keep us free, especially those we memorialize yesterday. Thank you for all those also brave men and women that stand with law enforcement, with our fire and police, all our sheriffs, our constables, those that guard prisoners in the jail. There are so many people that we don't see that keep us safe every day, and we thank you for those people. And we ask you that this Commissioners Court in this county might always prioritize giving those people the help and support they need from our hearts. Lord, also, please be with those people in North Texas and even in those in Temple area and all around the state and region that have experienced these terrible storms over the last month, month and a half. Help them in recovery in collaboration with their neighbors. Let them see your mercy through those that live by them. Help them to get past this difficult and challenging time, and please keep us safe here in Brazos County from further damages. Lord, please help us to honor you on this court in all that we think, say, and do. Bless everyone to listen well and study well and make the best decisions we can in way that gives you glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is call for assistance and input and our concerns. We had four sign up. Nancy Young.
Judge Peters and Commissioners, I'd like to take a moment to thank you for listening to our concerns. I know I quickly brought these to you last meeting about the bar that is planning to go in on Jones Road. The short timeframe that's been thrust upon us has us reeling. Sixty days from the first signage on 425, as in addition to a for-sale sign to the potential granting of a mixed beverage license by TABC, has given us very little time to figure out how to respond. The reality is that TABC's rules have silenced most of us. Unless you hear us and speak on our behalf, the 300-foot requirement makes it impossible for our concerns, which are many, to be heard. Honestly, the TABC website doesn't inspire confidence that they even follow their own guidelines. In researching how to protest, the website stated that the protest process lets communities challenge a business's alcohol license or permit application if they believe there is a risk to public safety. Certain state, local, and government officials, and in some cases, members of the public, can file a protest with us. Yet, these very concerns were stated to be not valid reasons to oppose it by the TABC when given. Please, we need your help. The poorly researched location puts many of us in harm's way. I don't want to be the one that comes back and says, "I told you so," after an unspeakable incident impacts our family, neighbors, or friends. We have a petition with us to give us a voice and ask you to stop this license. Our homes aren't rentals. These are homes where many of us have spent a significant portion of our lives in living, investing in, and growing our families. Some have stayed for generations. One person's vision for a bar shouldn't compromise the peace and safety of our entire community. We have about 55 signatures of neighbors up and down Jones Road that are all in opposition to this. I didn't get a copy made. I'm happy to give this to you, but I didn't get a copy made, and I still have people that are contacting me that have been out of town for the holiday weekend that want to sign. This is something that has all of us very concerned, as this would present just a very unsafe situation for all of us that live out there. Would you like to?
Why don't you hand it to Aubrey, and she can make copies later. Thank you. Michelle Martinez.
Thanks for this opportunity, Judge Peters and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Martinez, and I live at 8081 Perry Lane in College Station, within 300 feet of the site for which an application to serve mixed alcoholic beverages has been filed.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. My name is Michelle Martinez, and I live within 300 feet of the site where there is a proposed application for mixed beverage license service. I want to be clear that Six Strings Music and Entertainment and JDMY Entertainment, who have proposed this site, are not proposing a bar, but an indoor-outdoor entertainment venue, much larger scale that would imply, amidst a residential neighborhood. As a resident within 300 feet of the proposed site, I am one of very few people who can formally file a protest with TABC, and I have. And following their instructions on their website, I could object on grounds of public safety. But my protest, I got a call from TABC after I filed that only violations of code would be grounds for protest, not public safety. My point is, the TABC process is not transparent. We've had inadequate time to put our arguments together as residents, as a neighborhood, and the protest grounds, which I am concerned about, which is public safety, sanitation, lighting, goodness, sewage, water service, roads access, lighting, none of those concerns are grounds for protest with TABC, and they are the very grounds on which we need to object and which we have concerns. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bro Daniel.
My name is Bro Daniel. I reside at 7988 Drummer Circle in Canyon Creek subdivision off of Jones Road in Brazos County. I am here to plead with you, in the interest of public safety, to intercede on our behalf with the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to deny the mixed beverage license application of JDMY Entertainment to open and operate Six Strings Music and Events at 8088 Jones Road. In 1989, my husband and I built a home in Canyon Creek. We chose this community as it was a heavily treed rural subdivision with deed restrictions. We have maintained the trees rather than clearcutting our 11 acres to support a quiet atmosphere and to create a noise buffer from traffic on Jones Road and Highway 47. The companies located in the business park along Jones Road near Highway 60 have greatly impacted the traffic volume on Jones Road, but fortunately, not the noise level. Unfortunately, the same cannot be said for the party barn that Beta Theta Phi built on Jones Road. Tech Dot's failure to create an entrance ramp off Highway 47 from Highway 60, the creation of the traffic diamond at FM 2818 that many drivers seek to avoid, and the construction and expansion of Brazos Christian School on West Villa Maria have greatly impacted traffic on Jones Road. Jones is now a cut-through for cars, heavy trucks, included loaded ones going back and forth to the recycling center off Highway 60, and even for 18-wheelers, which I met this morning on the way here. The double-yellow lines on the pavement are no deterrent to drivers passing in unsafe zones. Jones is a narrow, unlit, curvy, and without any shoulders road. Its width is reduced even further where the road crosses the bridge over Turkey Creek. Now, James and Megan Young have applied for a liquor license to open a bar of sarts that serves alcohol on Jones Road across from Perry Lane and the Canyon Creek subdivision. Many of us do not share their vision that a place that serves alcohol to the public is needed or wanted. If the Youngs want a hub for community gatherings and events, why are they not constructing one in their own South College neighborhood? Because I do not live within 300 feet of the proposed establishment, I live more like 450, I cannot protest to TABC. Instead, TABC directs us outside this boundary to direct our concerns to you, our elected officials, who can protest TABC issuing a liquor license, which creates a risk to public safety. I ask you today to file a protest with TABC as a matter of public safety, as this location is not appropriate for establishing a place for public alcohol consumption. Help us maintain the integrity of our neighborhood and minimize adding buzzed or intoxicated drivers on a road that already lacks multiple safety measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Chastain Harris.
Good morning. Am I tall enough for this?
You can pull it down.
You can pull it down.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Chastain Harris, and I live on Barnwood Drive, which is right off of Jones Road. I am here today to voice my concerns about losing the culture and the safety of our neighborhood. I hope that you decide to care about this matter with us, because we want to voice, and we want to have a say about what happens in our neighborhood. I need one or more of you to help us speak on this matter. On April 25th, the neighborhood discovered a TABC mixed beverage license, 60-day sign notice, on the realtor sign of the 27 acres at 8088 Jones Road. On May 8th, the realtor sign came down, and the 60-day sign notice went down with it. On just nine days later, on May 17th, I received a flyer in my mailbox that did not have an address or a stamp, no postage, no postmark, stating the intentions of JDMY Entertainment to open a bar named Six Strings Music and Events. The same day, I came to the Brazos County Clerk and requested a copy of their application. I learned that JDMY Entertainment filed a licensing application with Brazos County for a mixed beverage license, which would be hard liquor and mixed beverages. We're not talking beer and wine. We're talking hard liquor. They plan to do $150,000 in alcohol sales this year, and they filed it the day before they put the flyer in my mailbox. The company will not own the property and will operate under a service management agreement. The property is owned by Justin and Samantha Casser, who live in Georgetown. The end of the application already has a certificate from the county clerk certifying that TABC, or to TABC, that the location for which the license permit is sought is a wet area and is not prohibited by any valid order of the Commissioners Court. So, on May 21st, we noticed a new sign went up with the old date. So now, we're on a 60-day again, but we're not sure if TABC is going to honor them reposting their sign, because my one neighbor, Millennial Ministries, who is behind my property, is more than 300 feet wide. It's the property between me and them. It's about 500 feet. I'm not eligible to raise my concerns with TABC. I need you to speak for me. My major concerns are that Jones Road is a two-lane, unlit, winding road, like my other neighbors have noticed, and voiced their concerns about the increased traffic, where there's no shoulder, no traffic lights to regulate the flow. It's an issue, and honestly, it's a safety concern with a bar. But it's not necessarily anything I desire to install either. I don't want there to be streetlights, traffic lights. I appreciate that my daughter and I can listen to the cicadas without the noise of loud music and parties. We can go on full-moon walks safely at night and discover the wildlife, which is part of living outside of town. On nights when there's not a game at Kyle Field, we can usually even see the stars. I would like to preserve the environment that we have in our neighborhood, not by stopping all development, but by keeping our neighborhood as a neighborhood. I have other concerns about property value, noise, the things that would come with a business that attracts that many patrons on 27 acres. That may be for another day. Today, we're here to ask you to help us have a voice and to figure out how we keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. I believe that four was the total that signed in, so we will consider and take action on Agenda items 3 through 20. Number three is approval of Citizen Participation Plan and General Land Office Community Development Block Ground Mitigation Method of Distribution Program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval of Uniform Policy for Human Resources.
Yeah.
Number four. Sorry.
Move approval.
Second.
But with one addition, on item F, employees shall return all assigned shirts in their possession at the Human Resource Department upon resignation, upon departure.
Tell me that one more time.
Adding the words "on departure" from the...
Where are you?
Item F.
Okay.
On separation, rather.
So with that correction to the policy, it... We had a motion.
Can y'all speak up?
Yeah, motion for this one, on separation, adding on separation.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second, correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval of Uniform Policy for Human Resources.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested of Sheriff's Office to renew the agreement with less so programs as administered by Texas Department of Public Safety.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of following job description.
Move approval A.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval requested from District Attorney's Office for payment authorization for Travis County Medical Examiner's Office for expert witness fee in the amount of $869. Purchaser was not obtained in advance.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval requested from Risk Management to pay Tommy Moore $50 for auto repairs to a rear window. The window was shattered by a rock landing, a lock by rock as the landscaping escaping crew worked.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval requested from Purchasing Department to declare a list of surplus property as salvaged according to the Local Government Code 263152, and authorized destruction or other means of disposal. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of Amendment Number 1 to Agreement 23-135 Nutritionist with School Nutrition Resource Group, Inc., of Brazos County.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of Amendment Number 4 to CIP 23-601 Architect Design Contract for Brazos County Administration Building for additional design services in the amount of $255,576, and a total contract amount of $1,624,303.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Yes, sir. Judge, if I remember, memory serves me correctly, this is the Third Amendment that we've had to this contract? And since we're up to $1.6 million in expenditure here, if it's possible to have a, for the public's understanding, a little presentation as to why and what we're doing here, just because I think it's part of open government, and we need, and full disclosure would be of benefit, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm gonna get a trip. This is the fourth change order.
Fourth, okay. I'm losing count, sorry.
You bet.
So the majority of that is related to the envelope work that we discussed prior, and we presented on. One of those amendments was the encompassing of the envelope work that came in. The original amendment that we did was a one-for-one replacement of what was here, and then when we looked back at it and went into redesign on that space, we made some enhancements to the building, added some more windows, changed up the envelope a little bit, and some majority of this, what you see here, is related to those renderings that we presented in court a couple weeks ago. The little bit of it.
Okay, so this is the fiscal appropriation as an amendment to the existing contract that encompasses the things that were presented to us, previous?
Yes.
Or the one...
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. And what do we estimate the total? This is the architect part. Do we... I know that, I remember 10 million for the Expo Center, I remember 61 million for the proposal for the building over here. What are we up to now as far as the amount that we expect the construction part of this is going to take place? You know, rough mind, I mean, you don't know until you get the...
Correct.
Okay. But kind of projections, if we have one on the Expo Center and one for what we have, has been submitted to us, for what's going to happen across the street, where are we on this project?
So on this building, it was divided up. Originally, it was right at 1.5 million for the North Wing, right at roughly 8.5 to 10 for the Sanctuary space, and then we were up against, I believe, 7 million on the envelope work, the total of the envelope work.
All right, so it's 15.5, 16, 17 million?
Yes, roughly. Oh, and Ed just brought to my attention and reminded me that the estimate on the Expo did not include a lot of the roof work, that we should have numbers on, hopefully in the next week or two.
Yeah. I think for part of the roof work, I don't know if we're, I haven't had a, sat down with our budget officer, but I think part of that roof work is covered under a insurance claim, but I'll...
That I'm not sure about.
Instead of spending more time here, I'll sit down with our budget officer and get further details on that.
All right.
Was our original estimation, now we're up to 17 million?
We were right at 10, in the 9 to 10 range, when we very first started, when we were just talking North Wing Sanctuary. Nothing on the exterior of the building.
All right. Not that I have any concerns about what we're proposing to do, but I do think it's important that we keep track of how things have changed relative to where we began.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I believe we still need to vote.
We do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is award bid, number 24-094 Hydrated Lime Recommended Award is Loyst North America Texas LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of the following committee for RFP, CIP 24-620 Staffing Analysis for the Brazos County Detention Center.
Move approval A through F.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Judge, I know that the agenda item is about approval of the committee, but if it's not appropriate here, if we could come back to and revisit the status of where we are in our staffing analysis, I know we've been making some efforts, and I certainly know that the Sheriff's Office has been making some significant efforts towards being able to get good, qualified people, and, but I'd just kind of like to have an update on where we are, if that's possible. Do I need to save that for a request for a future agenda item?
So, this particular request is, I mean, we know we're running over 800 now, and while the Sheriff's Office does a great job, I believe, and are efficient with the staffing that they have out there, you know, there's state requirements for certain numbers of jailers per inmate, and to have a third party come in, who is also an expert, we hope, to take a look at staffing, just to verify that what the Sheriff's Office does, and they do a great job, but just to have somebody else take a look and see whether the staffing is efficient, I believe in that it will be, but we're still talking lots of potential additional deputies because of the numbers that we're seeing in the jail now. So that's what this is, is an effort to make sure that we're efficient with the numbers that are out there. I think that's correct.
Well, then I'll save that for a future agenda item, because I'd like to get an update on where we are with our prior agreements that we have, and I've heard that they've been successful, and, you know, I see things on our personnel, changes of status and things on a regular basis, but just kind of like to get a analysis, instead of just picking those up piece by piece, of where we are relative to filling unfilled staff positions, as well as maybe the appropriate time after we get through with this analysis. Maybe it would fit to have them all put together for the Commissioners Court on where we are relative to what we're trying to accomplish on filling unfilled positions, and where we are relative to what our future needs will be, particularly, do we expect this will be completed prior to the budget sessions for this year?
I think that's the hope. We're trying to get this, a firm picked, and to try to see if we can get them in to analyze what the, what the, what the needs are, I mean, from their perspective, from an outside...
Judge, I understand that, but I'd just like to have an update on those two items in the future, if we can, and if I need to make that in the request for future agenda items.
I'm sure once we get that report back, it'll be updated to us, but we'll need that report.
Yeah. My hope would be, is that's before we do staffing requests and looking at what we need for the jail for this year in our budget session that's coming up very soon.
I think that's the hope.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep moving.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. 15 is permission to advertise for bid, CIP 24-620 Staffing Analysis of Brazos County Detention Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of Treasury Report for March 2024, quarter ending March 31, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seventeen is tax refund application for the following...
Move for approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eighteen is budget amendments, budget amendments FY twenty-three slash twenty-four, budget amendments thirty-three point zero-one through thirty-three point zero-eight.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nineteen is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight-two-zero-two-nine-two-four through claim number eight-two-zero-three-zero-four-one, and claim number nine-two-zero-one-two-two-seven through claim number nine-two-zero-one-two-nine-one.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty-one is acknowledgement of Brazos County Emergency Services District E S D Two Independent Auditor's Reports and Financial Statements for a Year Ended September thirty, twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-two is acknowledgement of investment report for quarter ending March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-three is acknowledgement of FY twenty-three twenty-four budget to actuals by fund as of May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, and an acknowledgement of FY twenty-three twenty-four contingency budget to actuals by fund as of May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-four is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted in May of twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-five, juvenile director's report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have forty in detention, twenty-four males, sixteen females, and we have forty-one on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Twenty-six is sheriff's report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Count this morning is eight hundred and forty. We got seven hundred and twelve men, one hundred and twenty-eight women, forty-two on electronic monitors.
That number just keeps going up.
And, you know, we see that cycle each year, that during summer, those numbers go up. It started a little early this year, and we didn't see the decline we expected last fall, so those things together have got, got us where we're at.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Number twenty-seven is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, a few things. You know, we just had a great Memorial Day weekend, and I hope everybody enjoyed that. Couple of things that have happened in our community, I think, are very noteworthy to mention, maybe even again, is the dedication of the Never Forget Garden and the Brazos Valley Veterans Memorial out in Veterans Park in College Station took place. If you hadn't had a chance to go by and see that, I would suggest that you do. Also, over the weekend, I once again had the opportunity to work with the Sons of the American Revolution, the Daughters of the American Revolution, in placing flags on the graves of veterans in our local cemeteries, and I would encourage everyone, I think they're still up, if you can, just take a slow drive through one of our local cemeteries and recognize those flags, and explain to your children, take them with you, explain to your children what those flags mean, and what they mean to us. With, in light of that, I, I've asked for a update on the status of a creation of a veterans and mental court, and we haven't had an update on the status of that so far, after I have made significant, repetitive requests for this, so I would put in one more request, because I think in light of Memorial Day celebrations that we had, that it makes sense for us to follow up with where things really are on that.
Have you had a chance to talk to Judge Hawthorne or Judge Hiller?
I, I have, and I would like, I would like for the community, you know, we had a study, we had a recommendation from a committee, but that's not a public presentation, me talking to somebody is not a public presentation to our community. We had quite a lot of dialogue from a number of people who spoke over a period of time, and that seems to have gone away, and I would just like for us to have a public disclosure of where we are and why we are there, so people will be able to know and understand. So, me talking to someone on staff, certainly have done that, or somebody who is in, in our community, but I don't recall, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't recall a presentation to this court relative to where we are and why we are there. So I'd like for that to take place. I, I think it's appropriate for us to communicate with our community, particularly our veterans. You know, we spent a weekend honoring those who are no longer with us, who served our country. I think it's appropriate that we have a presentation on where we are relative to those people who are still living in our community, and addressing their needs. Last thing I'd like to talk about is, in light of the conversations we've had here, I, I would request for a future agenda item that we have a presentation from our legal counsel about legally what the role is in establishing an alcohol permit in Brazos County, so that we can have everyone understand that, and then that would allow us to respond appropriately, if need be, to the folks who have taken the time out of their day for a couple of meetings here at least in a row, to talk about something that's a concern for them. So that would be a formal request for that as well.
Any other announcement?
Oh, there's, there's one other thing I wanted to say. I apologize, I forgot that. If you take a look at our budget, or at the Treasurer's Report, what I'd like to call to everybody's attention is, is with the very large amount of fund balance that we have, that we're generating on the general fund alone, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest per month. I think that's great, but I think we have interest budgeted in the general fund for this year to be six million dollars. I'm getting a nod from the auditor, so, you know, we've got three million, if we, if things continue as they are, short-term treasuries stay high, like they have, that means that we're projected to have a three-million-dollar, maybe plus, revenue surplus for Brazos County that was not in the budget. So thank you for indulging me and allowing me to talk about that. I think it's...
So, any other announcement? I understand that the storm that hit Dallas potentially can reach down here, I don't remember what the timeline was, I know Michelle, I don't know, I think she's actually on a, was on a call this morning about that. I mean, if it were to come, you know, there's some high winds and hail and that sort of thing, but I don't know that it's going to reach Brazos County, but keep your eye open. With that, next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.
Jesus.
Okay, let me just get ready. Thanks, Judge.